All right, good morning, everyone. I apologize for being a little bit late. This process has been challenging, huh? So at any rate, this is the meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners. It is about eight forty. So I will go ahead and call us to order and ask our clerk to take the roll, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Skaggs.
Here.
Woodin.
Here.
Womack.
Here.
Volkowski.
Present.
LaGrand.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
McLeod.
Here.
Sparks.
Present.
Teal.
Here.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Here.
Commissioners Coleman.
Here.
Burle.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Bolter.
Jones.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Chair Stack.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have eighteen members present, one absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I will now call on Commissioner Ponstein for the invocation.
Well, welcome, everyone. Hopefully, everyone had a blessed Thanksgiving and got to enjoy this great county of ours of Kent. I'm one of the blessed ones who get to do the invocation more than once this year. I was told I went over my allotted time last time, so I'll keep this short. I know there's a lot of business to be done today. So please join me. God grant us the serenity to accept the things we cannot change, courage to change the things we can, and the wisdom to know the difference. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next item on our agenda is public comment. I will note that there are two opportunities for public comment to the commissioners. As is the case in all of our meetings, the first opportunity is to address only items that are on the agenda. So if you are interested in addressing the board with respect to items that are on the agenda, I believe that we will have been identified earlier, there is a number system. So, Madam Clerk, I think you have the numbers with respect to who has requested, and I'll ask you to go ahead and call those in sequence. I'll say a couple of other things about the public comment first, but again, if you'll also call the name of the individual who is in waiting, so that we can move this along reasonably promptly. So a public comment at this point is going to be limited to two minutes per presenter. I suspect that a lot of the public comment is going to be with respect to projects that are part of the ARPA application process, and each applicant is asked to have one spokesperson per project, so we don't have twenty, thirty people addressing one project, but have one. So please make sure you've identified the person you would like to have as your spokesperson, and they will be given two minutes to make those comments. We do know that there have been a lot of emails and letters submitted to the county as part of this process, because we've asked for that. Those emails have been forwarded to the commissioners and will be made part of the record. So with that, Madam Clerk, can you go ahead and call the numbers of those wishing to address?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to make note, these numbers are not in sequential order, but they are numbered, so I will call their numbers when they're on deck.
Okay.
I apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name. Please feel free to correct me for the record as you come up. But first, we have Mike Bustler, card number one hundred, and on deck, we have Marcus Rignolda, card number one oh five.
Will you step forward to address just a couple of things also? Make sure that the microphone is right in front of you. This mic only has limited capacity to catch, so you have to be right in front of it. And the second is if you identify, again, your name, your address, and if it's with respect to a project, if you can identify the project. Thank you.
I took time out of my day today to explain to you why arts and entertainment is not frivolous spending and is not a luxury. My personal story is that my name is Michael Bustler. I am a stand-up comedian and a recovering alcoholic. When I was seventeen years old, I went to jail for selling weed. I have not been a part of the correction system since then. I spent the next fifteen years slowly drinking myself to death. I am not going to do that anymore, and I was able to achieve this through taxpayer services. My story is not common. My success is not common, because these systems do not have the success rate that they are tended to have. I know this because I went through it. I have been there. I know how difficult it is. The answer to these problems is very simple. There are too many people who need these services. Building bigger cages will not solve this problem. I know people who will not have the success that I had, because those people are no longer alive. When I was in high school, I went to a school called Horizons Community High School. It is for people like me, people who are poor, who were born into this, walking and living through this every day. And that is where I learned the building box of how to be a professional creative. It is also where I learned that I matter, that my life matters, and that that things like this are very important. And if you decide today that arts and entertainment are not worth the money, I would like you to look me in the eye and tell me that my life is not worth it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have card one oh five, Marcus Rignolda, on project number fifty-two, and on deck, we have card one oh one, Merzalata Muhammad.
I haven't seen the list. My comments are based on whether the list that is not at the table. So is the Four Star Theater on the list or not?
Well, we'll address the resolution when it comes up before the board.
Okay, so I honestly don't know the direction my comment should go. But I guess I will say, in all hope, as I said at your last meeting, I want to express my appreciation to all of you for what was really an accessible and transparent process for these public funds, which frankly, for years of trying, has been a very difficult thing for the Four Star Theater. But I'm sorry, I should start from the top. Marcus Rignolda, Gaineshounship resident and founder and president of the Friends of Four Star Theater, which is the owner and operator of the historic theater at nineteen forty-four Division with a mission to create a world-class cultural arts venue, which really will be a regional attraction that benefits all the residents of our county and far beyond with a focus on the community it's in. So, speaking in hopes that there is some funding there, we do have a four-million-dollar mission goal to achieve our mission, but there are very tangible needs our project has, so I want to build a little bit of excitement about what this potential funding would do. We have a beautiful nineteen thirty-eight building that's been an anchor in that community for most of its life. It's been vacant for twenty years, so everything needs to be replaced. So, very tangibly, a really cool iconic marquee, forty-foot wide by sixteen-foot tall, and we can preserve the investments we've already made bootstrapping this to get open. We are open in very limited capacity and already seeing the impact that this can make, but with our vision, we'll be able to extend that impact four and five times, get hundreds of people in that venue together to start building community, which is really what that part of our city needs, is a sense of community cohesiveness and a catalyst to help improve lives in the neighborhood. So I'm hopeful that the project is on your list. I wish I had seen it before I came up here, but thank you for your earnest efforts. I know all of you took this seriously. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have Merzalata Muhammad, and on deck, we have card number one nineteen, Foster.
Good morning. My name is Merzalata Muhammad, and I'm coming to you today from Caledonia. I actually work in the city of Grand Rapids, and I do a lot of my community investment all over the county, but Grand Rapids in particular. Again, I'm here today to support the funds that are part of the American Rescue Plan Act. I'm not sure how many organizations are on there, and I'm not even sure if I can say the one that I know the most. I don't mean to take away from someone else's two minutes, but I am familiar with the work that's done by the Diatribe, and I'm just here to say that as a parent, an educator, and an artist, I see the value in investing in arts that will give voice to marginalized groups of individuals. One of the most populated marginalized groups of individuals, which everyone in this room has been part of, is that of childhood. So children need a voice, and they need a way that they can come forth and be heard and be seen, so that they can be productive for the rest of their lives. And maybe some they sit here in this room. So if there's anything on the list that asks you to invest in our future, invest in seeing and hearing our children, that is where I think your money should go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have card one nineteen for project number thirty-nine. That's Foster. And on deck, we have card one fourteen, Marcel Price.
Good morning.
Good morning. How do I convince people in two minutes in a city I'm not from that the people that live here need this? I wish I knew how. I wish I could tug on each of your heartstrings and just tell you my whole story. But I've been living here for fifteen years. I call this place home. I've endured racism, sexism, West Michigan nice, harassment, and more. But as a creative, as one of the founders of the Diatribe and a curator of events in the city, I've experienced love, community, change. I've learned about different cultures, ways of life, opportunities, all created from my ability to communicate and use words, my ability to be vulnerable with my words and get others to do so as well. Kids need outlets, need opportunities. Kids need investment. We are proposing a building over at twenty-fourth Division Avenue, a portion of this city that has not been invested in for close to a hundred years, almost a hundred years, since the Homeowners Loan Corporation started in nineteen thirty. All I want to do, all I want for my squad, for everybody, is just to give these kids a chance, give these neighborhoods a chance. We work with communities, we work with kids, we work with adults. We get people to use their words and express how they truly, truly feel. I'm hoping that something I said today can get you guys to see that, that hope for the future that we all have, and we can be the change that we want to be for the city if you take this opportunity to look towards the Diatribe and other arts-based things in the four nine five oh seven. Thank you.
Next, next up, we have Marcel Price, card one fourteen for project thirty-nine, and on deck, we have Micah Perkins, card one oh seven.
Good morning. In front of you are unique letters of support and success stories from everything, from corrections officers to professors, residents to teachers, social workers, retirees, and even students from almost every one of the areas you all serve. People who identify as liberal, conservative, apolitical, or those like me who don't identify as Republican or Democrat, because I need to wait for those in power to show me who actually cares about people like us, which is what hopefully this vote that you all will create will do. What the public doesn't know is that this project is being held hostage due to politics and politicians, not the caliber or intentionality of the proposal, which is why people don't believe in politics here, or that anything will ever really change. That's why this is the only project that was supposed to be voted on, regardless of the fact that we passed each step of this process with fine colors. But I have a question for you all. How much do you all love Kent County? Do you love it enough to pass a project your peers are pressuring you to vote against, even though you know it hits every facet of what the community has asked for for years? Do you love enough to empower students in every corner of our county, ones in Byron Center struggling to stay alive because they don't fit in, ones in Wyoming whose poem made teachers aware that their uncle was the boogeyman under their bed, in Kelloggsville who needed a week to mourn after their peer was murdered, or the one in Northview who in front of their entire school disclosed why he was the quiet kid because a family member was molesting him? Does this sound like political work to you? I don't even know if the people organizing some of you to vote against us know what we do. Some didn't even read the ARPA proposals, so I know aren't willing to read the letters that you all received from the people you serve. Is this our system at work? You all decided to not even have us on the docket today. I love this county so much that for the last four years, I gave my all as my wife battled cancer, so much so that even when the cancer turned terminal and I continued to pour into community as I stood by her side and she fought and then died for eighteen grueling months, and not once have I ever asked for anything for my service. I am asking for the resources to be able to do more, to continue to do it right, and give everyone a reason to believe that it can be done here, and I'm not strong enough to take another loss. I've taken too many for one lifetime, and so has our community. I'm asking you all to please bring our proposal back and to give me and to give these people something to celebrate.
Next up, we have Micah Perkins, card one oh seven. And on deck, we have Martel Posey, card one oh eight.
That's a tough act to follow. Good morning. My name is Micah Perkins. I'm a representative with the Michigan Building Trades. And unlike virtually everyone else here today, I am asking you not for money, but to not spend money. Obviously, we have a lot of competing priorities for the money that we're talking about here today, and my request to this commission is that we not duplicate services that are already being done to no cost of the taxpayer. What am I talking about? We're looking at giving a million dollars to the ABC Contractors and West Michigan Construction Institute with virtually no strings attached of taxpayer money to duplicate something that is already being done at a superior level already in the county. My construction unions consistently self-fund and produce the best construction workers in the world. You're taking our tax dollars, my tax dollars, and subsidizing an inferior product. That's just what it is. We have repeatedly requested access to the West Michigan Construction Institute. We've been repeatedly denied. They won't let us in the building. They won't let us talk to their students. We've even offered to give them instructors, to share instructor space with them. They've denied that as well. Publicans historically have said that they don't like to play favorites in the marketplace. They don't want, they want to let the marketplace decide. You're tilting the scales here. You are playing favorites. My request is use this money for some of these other well-deserving causes, some of these other priorities that have a higher level, because you're not giving anything new to the community. You're not giving anything additional. You are actually taking away from the community by spending the money in this way. Thank you.
Next, we have card number one oh eight, Martel Posey, and on deck, Jay Etiger, card number one oh three.
There have been a few people who've talked so far about what those children in the city look like, that everybody wants to help, and that is pretty much me. My name is Martel Posey, and I am Grand Rapids, Michigan-born and raised, on the southeast side in the four nine five oh seven zip code. At thirty-seven years old, I watched the city I grew up in struggle with the realities in the aftermath of the crack epidemic. It was so bad that before I left elementary school, I was already losing peers to drugs and gun violence, before I left elementary school here in Grand Rapids, Michigan. The Grand Rapids Police Department had a temporary police trailer on the corner of the street that I grew up in, on Casson Hall. I stand here today knowing how I made it through these conditions and not becoming a product of my environment. That saving grace was all the individuals in my community who had youth programming or programs that I could go to as a young black child, who had no, no role models, nobody to sit there and show me the ways of life. A lot of the things that saved me was youth programming and people who cared about kids like me that a lot of people were just gonna look past. These programs taught me important life lessons and allowed me to experience as much joy that I could as a child. I am disappointed that we are here today voting on one of the only projects that aims to help children deal with the harsh realities of the world that some of us have to live in. At the same time, you give organizations like Amplify GR money without batting an eyelash. It's instances like this that remind me why some of us don't trust in the process. It's the rhetoric of creating barriers that make sure black and brown children do not have access to resources that give them a fighting chance at the life. I think some of you should be ashamed of yourselves for turning down this project that gives so much hope to our community and an opportunity for kids really to engage in programming. That's life-changing. We've seen the results of what the work the Diatribe has been doing, and if you look outside of these walls, you already know, like, all of the carjackings- you already know, like, all of the carjackings and all of that stuff that's going on in the city. These kids need something. Kids like me needed something to go through, somebody to talk to, to understand them. Without that, without programming that deals with kids with no guidance and no resources, you're going to have the same problem. You're going to be back here voting on how do we fix this problem because you guys didn't give an opportunity to the things that will help little black boys like me get here, the 37-year-olds, without being locked up into the system, without falling and being a statistic to so many things that we see amongst our city. So, please, just think about that when you think about denying children access to programming.
Next, we have card number 103, Jay Etiger, project for project 213. And on deck, we have Kimberly Williams, card 118.
My name is Jay Etiger. I'm the SVP of Development for Junior achievement of the Michigan Great Lakes. And I am here and available to answer questions on our project should you have any questions regarding it. Our mission is to inspire and prepare young people to succeed in a global economy. We provide financial literacy, work readiness, and entrepreneurship education to kids K-12, all kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have card 118, Kimberly Williams. And on deck, we have card 112, John Ippe.
I am Kimberly Williams, excuse my voice. I am here to speak to you about intentionality for equitable outcomes. I know that there's proposals before you, and so I just want to remind you of a few things. Intentionality requires the individual and the collective work. It requires each person, particularly leaders, to become self-aware of their own unconscious biases, notice when automatic reactions might be a result of our implicit biases, and to actively work against biases when making decisions. The deliberate act of noticing when slowing down before we act is especially important. Before we act, we need to make sure that we are taking the time to check our, check our own biases and to make sure that we are doing things to get those intentional equitable outcomes. Intentionality can help an organization root out and eliminate hidden barriers and their own biases. It can be the difference between leading a community that feels valued and engaged versus one that feels dispensable and nonessential. Legacy is important. I'm sure you all know that. But we also know that the black community has continually been locked out of legacy. I know that there are several organizations that are black-led that have brought proposals before you. I ask that you don't try to pit those against each other, but look for the equitable outcomes that they could have in the community and make your decision based on those merits. I know many of you have come today with your minds already made up. It's not too late. I've set in positions much as you have. And I know that it's not too late to go back and say, "I can make another decision. I can be intentional." I ask that you take that time.
Thank you.
Next, we have card number 112, John Ippe, for project 116. And on deck, we have card number 111, Victor Williams.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name is John Ippe. I'm the Executive Director with Amplify GR. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be considered for the Boston Square Community Hub project. This has been a journey for the last three or four years that really has been a focus of intentionally including and engaging with local neighbors and residents to really co-create the opportunity to what has become now the Boston Square Community Hub. So, we've worked in partnership with the Boston Square Neighborhood Association, with Oakdale Neighbors, the City of Grand Rapids, and over 300 local residents that have helped give voice and vision to what this project will ultimately be. I think the exciting part about this project that it's also going to be co-located next to over 150 mixed-income housing units that we hope to be starting construction in the next 18 months. And so, imagine, imagine this lively community center that has an early learning center operated by the Early Learning Neighborhood Collaboratives that will be supporting 100-plus young children, Corewell Health, offering health and mental services as well as things like dieticians, cooking classes, et cetera, and a robust after-school programming. And so, I think we really aspire that this, this project becomes really the front porch in the living room of the Boston Square Neighborhood Association. So, with all that, we just really appreciate your thoughtful consideration for this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Victor Williams, card 111, for project number 88. Okay, project 304. Good, and on deck, we have DeAndre Jones, card number 110.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Victor Williams. I'm the President and Founder of the Boston Square Neighborhood Association. I'm also the President of Grand Rapids Hip-Hop Coalition. As someone who's been involved in arts my entire life, I would say hip-hop saved my life. I recognize the value of arts in our community. As someone who's been involved in politics, who's been on the struggle on the front lines for decades now, I recognize that our community, black community, has been shut out, as my wife said earlier. And the thing that we've been shut out of most is economic opportunities. We need, we need to make economic equity for the African-American community in Grand Rapids. I'm from 49507, the most under-invested neighborhood in the entire Kent County. We need economic equity. The thing that's going to give all of us an opportunity for economic equity is black-owned CDIF, credit union, financial institution that we can all go to and pull from to support our various causes. And so, that's what I'm hoping that you would support here today, is an opportunity for the black community to have resources to pull from, financial resources, to support all of our dreams and aspirations that we have for our arts and culture programs, economic equity for the African-American community. We need that CDIF. Thank you.
Next up, we have DeAndre Jones, card 110. And on deck, we have card 106, Nathan Bean.
Hello.
Good morning, DeAndre.
Everybody, my name is DeAndre Jones. I like to say I'm Mr. PBGR. But I like to say, um, politics. I'm an independent. I've told you guys I'm an independent because even if you're a Democrat or Republican, there's still divides within the parties. People think just because a person is a Democrat or a Republican that you guys are just all together, but you guys aren't. That's why I'm an independent, because I don't, I know my opinion is my opinion. I'm fine with my opinion, even if people don't agree with it. I'm, I'm willing to sit here by myself and say, "Hey, this is what I think." And if other people don't agree, that's perfectly fine with me. I don't really care. But I just want to continuously say, the second word city for economic development for African-American people, it's a lot of African-American people that deserve the opportunity to show what they can create, to create equitable outcomes, to create sustainable wages, to create jobs that's above the poverty line, to give youth some type of hope, to give youth some type of aspiration. I mean, I brought a gun to school when I was a kid that brought the gun to East Kenwood High School. So, nobody can tell me how the juvenile detention really is. Nobody can tell me how it is to be on Level 3, to be in Delta Unit, to be in Charlie Unit, to be in Bravo. You can't tell me how it is to be in Alpha. You probably think you are Alpha. You know what I'm saying? But like, nobody can tell me about those things. You can't tell me about being a residential placement. You can't tell me about having to sit there for six months and have to be on a family-owned residential home. It feels like a slave plantation because everybody sticks together. And even if you didn't do something wrong, people are still going to be against you. But basically, I just want to say, it's a lot of African-American people that have great proposals, that have great things that they're trying to do for this community. This community has never really had the intentionality to invest in the people. And historically, you've left us out. And historically, today, we ask you to include us today. Thank you.
Next, we have card 106, Nathan Bean from Grand Rapids Center for Community Transformation to discuss project number 70. And on deck, we have card 115, Miranda Kranyak.
Good morning. Thank you. Nate Bean, I'm the COO for the Grand Rapids Center for Community Transformation, housed in the 49507 community. Our mission is really pretty simple overall. It's to create opportunities for transformation. And so, we believe that kind of our unique positioning in our neighborhood to bring together philanthropy, to bring together community, black, white, young, old. We have a history of facilitating cross-sector partnerships that bring about transformation. And so, specifically with this project, we are looking to engage 500 individuals through job placements in Kent County. We'll be providing vocational training in the areas of landscaping, hospitality, and construction. And then, we'll also be training up to 20 businesses and nonprofits in our execution framework called the Entrepreneurial Operating System that has been proven to help organizations, businesses, nonprofits really scale to impact. And so, we're also going to be looking at supporting minority and women-owned food entrepreneurs through access to our state-of-the-art event center and commercial kitchen and providing technical assistance along the way. And so, we greatly appreciate you all considering this project. We're also ready and willing to partner with other organizations that have a similar focus. And so, I do have to take off, but my colleague and our CFO, Lynn Haynes, will be available for any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have card 115, Miranda Kranyak. And on deck, we have Eric Brown, card 117.
Hello, I'm Miranda Kranyak, 20-year Grand Rapidian and arts and cultural leader in Grand Rapids, Michigan. I am currently on the GRR Art Committee, bringing art to the airport. I serve as Opera Grand Rapids Development Director. I also have been a two-year governmental, sorry, two-year gubernatorial appointee of the Michigan Humanities Council. I read for both MCACA and the National Endowment for the Arts. And I am here to remind you that the arts have always been supported by government funds. The mural on this building was supported by government funds. The calder outside was supported by government funds. Arts and cultural institutions are run by professionals. We know what we're doing. We're deserving of your trust. Our boards are supported by the most talented and responsible people in Grand Rapids. Historically, you have trusted us. In the future, you should also trust us.
Thank you.
Next up, we have card 117, Eric Brown, for project 304. And on deck, we have Shayna Haynes-Herd, card number 116.
Good morning. Eric Brown, the eighth president of Urban League of West Michigan, native, born and raised, almost 53 years living in this county for my entire life. Part of, I'm blessed to be at the helm of an organization, a historic civil rights organization that has been fighting this fight for almost eight decades within this community, eight decades within this community. Things ain't perfect, and we've got a long way to go. But without those eight decades previously, we wouldn't even be standing here right now to be able to go forward where we're trying to go forward to. That being said, I am, I am here to ask you to consider our proposal, a proposal that helps other organizations like we've been doing for the last 80, 80 years, helping people keep, stay in their homes, not be, not kicked out of their homes, helping people that find jobs, to create businesses, to create wealth within this community for the last eight decades. The project that we have submitted is a collaborative proposal with grassroots, other grassroots organizations that want to provide for economic justice for, within Kent County for African-American people, people that have been disproportionately affected by the COVID pandemic for which these funds have been allocated for. That's who we serve, and that's who we want to collaborate with in order to be able to take that money and to not, not let that money stay at that level, but be able to match that money with other funds to be able to continue to do the work that we all collectively are doing throughout this community for the next eight generations, eight decades and beyond. So, I'm asking you guys to strongly consider our proposal. I'm not standing here against any other proposal. There's several great proposals. But what I'm saying is the proposal that we're putting forth benefits more than just our organization. It benefits the entire community. Not that the others don't, but we want to be able to help other organizations as well through finances, through economic justice. If you look at the social determinants health, you look at the causes of violence, it all, a lot of it goes back to the instability in the home for lack of income, lack of generational wealth, lack of wealth within this community for African-Americans. Again, ARPA funds, remember what they were intended for from the feds. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have card 116, Shayna Haynes-Herd. And Mr. Chair, this is the last speaker, to my knowledge, for this round of public comment.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Shayna, founder of Reaching Beyond Bias and Passa Mike GR. I wrote this this morning, just a message, take what you want from it. Stressed yet at ease, navigating giant waves with ease, despite what you believe, I'm the captain of the sea. Not a single ship has ish on me, even the Titanic. I move around effortlessly with excellence. I am the sea, the flow that connects every corner of each continent, deeper than what you dare to dream. The depths of me are full of mystical creatures that eyes have never seen. I give grace to some. Some unworthy ships are still part of the grand destiny, carrying jewels and treasure, diseases to strange places, strange faces, strange fruit, fruit that bears truth, fruit that takes root wherever it lands, whether stolen lands or the bottom of the ocean. It's all part of the grand plan, unfolding on a global stage as spectators take their place within the grand stand, becoming a grand fan of the tomfoolery distracted by the flashy jewelry. We forgot that we are the jewel. We seek, we find, because the waves keep record of time. From Amistad to America, we have been here since the dawn. More power was the seed of, was in the speed of our spawn than we can contain. So, make way before we take way because these rapids can get rough, and you're testing your luck. We're running out of Fs to give. We're relying on grace, but once we open the gates, there's no going back. We're rallying behind everybody black. Everybody you attack with your lies and half-truths. The roof is on fire, and the well has run dry. The ceilings you've imposed can't keep in what's inside, so let it burn. This light of mine comes from the source. It is a force to be reckoned with, so act quick because justice has set its course. Through uncharted seas, rapid rivers, and Great Lakes, think about what's at stake and take your place at the table. Grab a plate and eat at the fruits of your labors. Is the fruit bitter or sweet, that which you've reaped? Savor the flavor that you've created and pray to your Creator that you've moved the needle enough to enter the kingdom. In the name of freedom, of liberty, and justice for all, we are one nation, invisible, indivisible, inseparable from God. We respond.[1670.79] We respond. You've heard our cries, you've deceived us with lies, but the people you refuse to see are the universe's eyes, always watching, always waiting, always praying. You may think you're praying as you lie and exploit. We turn your smog into smoke signals and follow the code. The yellow brick road of a promised land, a land that is grand. What is your plan?
Thank you.
I think I have 45 seconds still, right?
Well, actually, you 35 seconds passed.
Oh, did? Well, thank you for my time. I just want to uplift again all of the incredible work that's being done and led by Black People for Black People. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we do have one more card. Helen Lehman wishes to speak on the revolving loan fund.
Thank you. As a resident of Cannon Township with an Ada mailing address in the Lowell School District with a Grattan phone number, who works and worships in Grand Rapids, I have to tell you that anywhere I go in Kent County, anywhere that you had a town hall meeting in Kent County, people talked about affordable housing. Okay? We don't have enough of it. There is not a person in this room who hasn't talked to somebody who had multiple offers to buy a home, and they failed. They couldn't do it. About two years ago, on a cold December day, I had the privilege of working with this amazing woman in the Bellknap neighborhood, who is an Ottawa County social worker, court social worker. She had befriended one of the gentlemen who lived in the tent city up on the hill. And I had the privilege of welcoming him to the low-income senior housing complex that I help operate, that I helped build in 1992. That's how old I am and how long I've been doing this. And I have to tell you, Mark moved in. I called my husband, and I was like, "Hey, I'm really glad you got the day off. Could you bring your van in?" And I sent him to the small little storage unit where Mark had kept his belongings while he lived in a tent. And then, I grabbed a couple of college kids home on Christmas break and said, "We're moving somebody in." And I'm telling you what, that's been transformational for Mark. He comes into my office about once a month, usually to bring me something he salvaged from a dumpster, and he thanks us. And then, while you said no to the proposal that the Collaborative of the Permanent Housing Coordinating Council proposed for housing, I would really like you to be able to support in a meaningful way the small amount of money that you are earmarking for the revolving loan fund. And one additional thing I would ask is that you put people who've built housing into the decision-making realm of developing that fund. Thank you for your time and for the efforts that you've put into this.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you all for your comments presented to us. I'll now move to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda, and I will call upon Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair. I move the consent agenda of today's date.
Your support?
Support.
Supported by Vice Chair Breebie. Comments or questions? This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you take the roll call?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Skaggs--
Yes.
Woodin--
Yes.
Womack--
Yes.
Bolkowski--
Yes.
Legrand--
Yes.
Hennessy--
McLeod--
Yes.
Sparks--
Yes.
Teal--
Yes.
Vice Chair Breebie--
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman--
Yes.
Burl--
Yes.
Ponstein--
Yes.
Bolter-- Jones--
Yes.
Morgan--
Yes.
Antor--
Yes.
Green--
Yes.
Chair Stuck--
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you very much. We will now move to our resolutions for the day. And the first resolution, 7A, and I will call upon Commissioner Vice Chair Breebie.
Thank you, Chair. Before I make the motion, I would like to note some clarification to one of the items on this list. And this change has already been made with the clerk. She has the information already. So, on page eight of 23 of our packet, about halfway down the page, I would like to clarify the stipulation for the $500,000 capital enhancements for facilities serving older adults in Kent County. And I would like to clarify that this funding can only be applied to proposals that have been submitted as part of this process. Is that understood?
It is understood. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So, with that said, I move Resolution 121 of today's date, the ARPA funding allocations from the Administrator's Office.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Womack. Thank you. So, before I open this up for comments and questions, the, this has been a work in process that has gone on now for months and right on up to five minutes after we started this meeting. So, I'm going to read through the allocation in that motion so that we all have a specific understanding of what the current motion is with respect to how to allocate the $127 million of ARPA funds. It notes in this motion that there has been previously already allocated funds identified in Exhibit A of the resolution for a total of approximately 11 million of that total fund has already been allocated. I think it was all back in January of this year and April of this year. So, this is with respect to the remaining balance of that fund. The motion provides for an allocation of $17,500,000 to the Kent County Revolving Housing Fund. This will be in a process to be established with the Kent County Fund Administrator for purposes of a CDFI that will allow for matching funds and investments throughout Kent County to address the housing needs. Provides for $500,000 to Kent County Equitable Housing Initiative, Housing Next, for its project. It provides for $500,000 to the Four Star Theater renovation project. It provides for $4 million to the Boston Square Hub project. It provides $2 million to the Kraus Memorial Library project. It would provide $1 million to the Junior Achievement Free Enterprise Center. It would provide $2 million to the Feeding America, Nourish Tomorrow advancement campaign. It would provide $1 million to the preventative animal control by increasing pent owner access to veterinary care program. It would provide $3,923,356 to the Behavior Health Crisis Center system with Network 180. It would provide $15 million to the Kent County Parks Greenway projects that are further detailed in Exhibit C. It would provide $2,837,500 to the Kent County Sheriff's Office for the School Safety Radio Network project. It would provide $6 billion for the Medical Examination Facility project. It would provide $3,800,000 for red lead remediation, paint, pipe, and training and rebatement project. Provide $1 million for the Sports Complex Expansion project. It would provide $6 million for the City of Wyoming City Center Bridge and Trail Activation It would provide $6 million to the Grand Agricultural Center of West Michigan, Kent County Youth Project. It would provide $6 million to the John Ball Zoo Expansion project. It would provide $1 million to the Grand Rapids Public Museum Entry and Gathering Space It would provide $4 million to the Kent County Domestic Violence Action Network. It would provide $8,500,000 for the Transforming of Kent County Road Network project. It would provide $500,000 for the capital enhancement for facilities for senior older It would provide $1 million to the United Methodist Community House project. It would provide $3 million for the PFAS remediation projects. It would provide $1 million for the Field of Movement Innovative Workforce Development for Economic Mobility project from the Grand Rapids Center for Community Transformation. It would provide $1 million for the West Michigan Construction Institute Phase II Expansion. It would provide $138,000 for the SMB and Workforce Development Support and Training project from Wyoming Kentwood Chamber. It would provide $2 million for the Community Economic and Workforce Development through a Community Development Financial Institutions Fund, CDFI, with the Kent County Hispanic It would provide $4 million for Community Development Financial Institutions, a CDFI, with the Urban League of West Michigan for purposes of providing business, workforce, and development of initiatives with arts and cultural amenities in the African-American community. It would provide $1 million for a place-based approach to reducing health disparities in Kent County's African-American community. It would provide $2 million for the Live, Work, and Thrive project with the AYA Youth Collective. This motion would also acknowledge that there is $9 million of the remaining funds that will be held in reserve for application and determination in the early part of next With that, any comments or questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Sparks, your hand was up first.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Chair. I appreciate the work of the staff and everyone, all the Commissioners and your time. I just want to say that this still is not enough for people of color. I don't like pitting Black organizations against each other. It's not fair. It's not right. There are a lot of good organizations out there, so I don't like that. I don't like the fact that one of the proposals that was rated high, the Diatribe, is not even on here. They were rated high. So, that gives me pause. Also, we heard from the gentleman, Mr. Perkins, about the West Michigan Construction Institute, where they're again replicating something that's already there. So, we're giving a million dollars. I don't, I'm not quite sure why. It just doesn't make sense to me. And I don't see anything for Asians. I don't see anything for Indians on here. It's not a complete plan. I'm sure it's the best that you're willing to do, so thank you, you know, for that. But I think everybody that came out today, they had something to say, because as a Black Commissioner, I can tell you that it's tough up here, and I'm just being transparent. It's tough. And we have your back, and we're trying, but it doesn't always work. But we're going to continue. Commissioner McLeod, Commissioner Womack, and other Commissioners, there are other Commissioners up here too that are working on your behalf. So, I just want you to know that we do care, and we do see you, and we hear you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Yes. Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. So, you know, I have to say that this list made me, made me pause. It made me pretty upset to see that the community that bore the brunt of the pandemic is so minimally represented in this list. I love the fact that there's a CDFI. Love that. Urban League, you know, will do well with those funds. I love the fact that we're, you know, lifting up Black and Brown communities in health by providing funding to GRAHE for those initiatives. But I've highlighted some things that were not even on the staff recommendations, were not even rated highly from our exercise that we did at the beginning of this. And it's fairly, it's very clear that those projects got way more funding than the community that we reached out to to ask them for, "Bring your proposals to us. We will, you know, we will consider them equally. We will do what we need to do as a commission to make sure that those are represented." And you all know, I rarely have anything to say, but I am just going to be honest, I'm pissed this morning. I'm very upset with what this is. And I think that we all need to be held to account, because this was not supposed to be political. This was supposed to be something where we listened to the community, and we did what we needed to do to make sure that we made the communities whole that really, again, bore the brunt of this pandemic. So, all I will say is that at the end of the day, when we go home and we have to look ourselves in the mirror, and is this, is this okay? Are you okay with this? The Diatribe was rated 12s. Of all of the community projects. They are not on this list for a very political reason, and I'm not going to bring it out. I do not think that this is the way that we should be moving this forward. I really, really hope that by the time we're actually, you know, talking about what the holdback supports and what, you know, what some, the housing revolving fund, the, you know, CDFIs, what they end up supporting, I really hope that there is some intentionality, as one of our speakers had referenced, that we are very intentional about how we move this forward. It's very frustrating. It's very frustrating to be one of the few Commissioners of color up here to have to face the community that said, you know, that really thought that they were going to have an opportunity, and this is what they got. I don't think it's fair, and I think that, you know, proposals that were rated highly by all of us on this, on this dais should be considered, and they should not have been taken off. So, I'm going to leave it at that, and I might have more to say, but I need to calm myself down.
Commissioner Bolkowski, and then Commissioner Antor.
I thought there'd be more ahead of me. I--
I'm sorry, maybe there were.
Well, but, you know, truly thank you, Chair, for your work on this. Thank you, Alan, your staff, for your work, the work on this. However, the result in front of us, you know, we, I don't know if people look at the white folks on the back wall, but one that I have most respect for is Vern Ayler's. Sorry, Commissioner Morgan, you're second. But you truly are. But Vern Ayler's used to say often, and he said it often, when he took votes in Washington, "There was a lot in that bill I didn't like, but I voted for it anyways." He said that often. And I truly, I still respect Vern, and he did a lot for our community. But the end result that's before us, you know, is this beautiful kind of take it or leave it, and all of that. There are a few things in here that are transformational, but of course, the one that smacks me most is the one that labeled itself transformational, and it's just paving roads. I mean, the audacity of the road commission to say, "We're transforming our road network." They're not doing more bike lanes or pedestrian safety. There are people dying on bicycles, people getting hit in vehicles, but we're just going to pave some more roads, even though we got $22 million in our cash reserves that are undesignated. So, we're going to, we're going to do this. And then, I totally understand, you know, to the victor go the spoils, and we are in the minority as this body. However, you know, my very first vote, when I was a youngster, was almost 40 years ago. My mother made sure I had an absentee ballot, because the Kentwood schools had a special election for a hockey rink. And the citizens of Kentwood said, "We want to tax ourselves for a hockey rink." And I was surprised, and I'm glad, the proposal from Rockford, I got nothing against hockey. I did vote yes back then, because I wouldn't have been able to sleep inside if I didn't. But that, but again, that if a community wants a hockey rink, they pay for it. And every community in Kent County who's wanted a library has paid for that. It took Caledonia two millet elections to pay for their library, and now we're going to give $2 million to Rockford. What makes Rockford better than all the other communities, all the other communities that have paid for their own building? But to the victor go the spoils. I get it, and that's fine. But the part, you know, again, the, what really gets me today is that we have, I think we've crossed the line, I believe we have, from just the pure old horse trading that goes with politics. You got the votes, you win it. I'm reminded of four years ago this month, when the land bank was put out of its goodness because the votes were here, and it was quickly rushed. We had no opportunities. It was rushed, and as I said then, it was an action of power and punishment. And I still believe that about the land bank, and we still have suffered negative consequences because of that vote, but some people won. Today, we have another opportunity to exercise not power, well, power punishment and privilege. Two weeks ago, we had a $2 million dire proposal for the Diatribe. Today, it's zero, and it's about power, privilege, and punishment. In America, you are innocent until proven guilty. And on January 6th, almost two years ago, there were people who were exercising their First Amendment rights, allegedly. Some of those folks just last week were convicted of seditious conspiracy. So, I am not casting any allegations of others who may face that charge in the future, but these, I think they're only men thus far, convicted guilty of seditious conspiracy. The Diatribe isn't convicted in public. It was quietly, "Oh, we can't support them, because they said some things that we don't like." And those opportunities, you know, and I've, I said this at our, I paused to call it-- I, I paused the call at a work session, but I said at our work session, "Why are we funding the radios for schools? $2.4 million. The school's got capital dollars." And now it even grinds me more because when the school radio network is used, it's too late. It's too late. Some kid brought a gun into school, or an adult brought a gun into the school. It is too late. And I don't know if you have been at a diatribe experience. I don't know if you've been at somewhere where, in addition to today, you all were at a diatribe experience today because the spoken word, that at least was powerful for me, they bring that to every corner of Kent County, and that spoken word is communication when it's not too late. It truly is saving lives. It's not helping the sheriff get there, and I'm saying the sheriff doesn't have to get there on time when we're in a shooting incident. But again, it is way too late. And the, the opportunity to invest in the diatribe is far enough upstream. So again, ah, you know, and I could go on and on. You all know that. I'll just be back with Deandre in January and continue this because I do respect and enjoy his perspective and his advocacy. So, so at this point, the question I ask myself in honor of Vern Ayers is, is there enough good in this resolution to outweigh the stench that will stain me well beyond December 31st if I vote yes? So that's where I sit. I do pledge, at this moment, I pledged before the meeting, I'm going to do everything I can to continue to support the diatribe. As a matter of full disclosure, disability advocates gave a letter of support, I think it was back in the spring, with honor, signed that letter of support. So anyways, yeah. Yeah, I'll leave it there.
So, just as a point, the rules provide for a five-minute limit. You set the new rule limit of six minutes and 30 seconds, so that'll be the new rule, six minutes and 30 seconds. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, I think Commissioner Antor, you were next.
Thank you, Chair. That's better than the two minutes I got at one of the meetings. And I was going off being too long, but-
This way it goes.
I actually agree with some of what Commissioner Bolkowski was talking about, other things I disagree on. I, I think we got to keep cars and bikes out of this, out of the road together. You know, I mean, let's think about it. Grand Rapids is already a nightmare to drive around in, and the last thing we need is more bike lanes in the roads because it's the most dangerous, I can't imagine anything more dangerous right now. Bikes don't have airbags. They don't have good bumpers. And people are on the phones constantly. I think there's better alternatives, but that's a whole different issue. You know, I lost my business after 30 years because of the pandemic. I never got a dime from anybody as a result. And what I really wanted to talk about is the fact that all this money that we're talking about, this is monopoly money. None of this stuff that we're buying is paid for. None of it. This is all borrowed money. This is printed money. They're estimating right now our national debt's going to go up to $41 trillion, $41 trillion by 2026 because of this type of spending. So that's a little bit of reality. When we were talking about our kids' futures and, and futures of all these different social economic groups, the reality is, we're, we're all going to be in the same boat pretty soon because of this national debt. And we're arguing about how we're going to spend this money. The road commission, I'm, I'm actually for the road commission spending because we, we talked to Steve Warren when he was here. He, he never got a dime from the governor, even though she was going to fix the damn roads. He said, "I never got a dime." So there's reality involved with this. We all drive on the roads. The roads are a mess. They're still a mess. And Steve is able to leverage the money he's going to get with local units to get even more out of that money for local projects, which affects most of us. So my whole point is, I, I'm against a lot of this stuff. I, I don't like the gamesmanship that's taking place with some of these things. I don't like playing games. I think we should be above board and honest and not all these political ploys. I'm a very conservative person, as most of you people know. I don't have a filter. I just tell it how I see it. And I don't know intimately enough about any of these groups. You know, I mean, I got to take it at face value because I don't work with a lot of these people. I don't know how it works on the inside. So you got to kind of work as a collaborative. What do we know, and how are we going to act on it? This has been an incredibly difficult process, I think, for, for our chair and Al because this is something we've never done before, and we're trying to appease a whole lot of people. And you're never going to keep everybody happy. And if there's some really good projects that's not going to get funding, that's too bad. It really is. There's probably some really crappy projects that are going to get funding. It's just that we don't really know. We've got to do our best due diligence on this stuff. Again, I'm against several of the things I see, but I'm going to vote in favor of this to move this thing along. My, if I vote no, which I could do as well, the money's going to be spent regardless. I just have a real problem with the fact that this is borrowed money. This money is not real. This is printed money that we're all going to have to pay eventually, okay? We're going to have to pay for this, and what that looks like is going to be pretty ugly, I think. And you can look at Venezuela if you want to know what our future might be in regards to spending. I'd like to engage you later, maybe?
Well, wait, wait, Commissioner, you address me.
I'm sorry. Well, he, he mentioned something I wanted to say. I'd be more happy to-
Still, you address me.
-talk to any of these folks afterwards about my perspective. But thank you for the amount of time. That was my main point. Keep in mind, this is not real money. Thank you.
Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair Sec. You know, I want to echo the comments made by many of my colleagues. You know, I, I'm going to start with the parts of this plan that I, I very much appreciate. Seventeen million, seventeen and a half million dollars for the Kent County Revolving Housing Fund, while certainly not as high a level that I think warrants the need. To my knowledge, it is the, and I could be wrong about this, it could very well be the single largest investment made by a local government in affordable housing in West Michigan history. And the fact that we're also putting it into a CDFI that could match it even over two to one to turn it into a $70 million revolving fund to support affordable housing needs in this community is truly a transformational project in my view. As was said in our town halls, in our survey, affordable housing was one of the top priorities. And while it is not a perfect investment, in my view, it is still a very good one. And hopefully, a, a sign of Kent County taking a new leadership role in helping ensure we are tackling the housing crisis. Additionally, $3.8 million for lead remediation, paint, pipe, and training. We have been talking about the lead health crisis in this community for years. And we have had folks from the Healthy Homes Coalition come to this dais and plead with us to invest in lead remediation. And we have an opportunity with these funds to do just that, to tackle the, the, the homes that have repeated incidences of poisoning children for lead and helping those children have a much better outlook and, and a much better future because they live in healthier homes. You know, additionally, the, 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 the million dollars for United Methodist Community House. This is, to my knowledge, the only current senior facility in the 49507 zip code. I could be wrong. But with its project, it will become a larger, robust senior center. It will provide childcare. It will provide housing, and will help revitalize the South Division corridor and bring investment into a Black run organization. Similarly, you know, I am, been especially excited and proud about the $2 million that we are funding into the Hispanic Center to help them establish a Hispanic-run CDFI. And the $4 million, we'll be investing in the Urban League to establish a African-American-run CDFI. And additionally, the million dollars we're investing in Grahie. That being said, certainly there are parts of this pro, of this proposal before us that I either don't necessarily love or that I am frustrated by. The Construction Institute being one, full disclosure, and I've mentioned that before in, in other conversations. And I am especially disappointed that the diatribe is not in here. You all deserved to be funded. I have personally seen the transformational work you do, and this, even though this proposal has so many good things in it and is something that I will support, we failed you. And I failed you. And for that, I apologize. But I still believe that the things that we can achieve with the funding that has been mapped out will have a transformational impact on tackling the housing crisis, tackling lead health, tackling mental health, and tackling economic opportunities for communities of color. Not to the amount that they deserve, nor the amount that they need, but helps move the dial farther than it has before and hopefully can help us move it farther still. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say that I greatly appreciate all the work that's been, been put into this. I, I think there's zero of us sitting around this table that would have designed the allocations exactly as they've turned out on, on paper. And, and that's because, you know, that's the deliberative process, you know, working through all of our different perspectives and the different people that we represent. I, I do want to make mention because we, ARPA is not, you know, just Kent County. And I, I think that's important to note that the, the allocation structure put into ARPA by the Biden administration really intended to address, like, the distribution to areas really hit hard by COVID. And I, I genuinely understand, I certainly, if I, you know, been sitting in Congress, probably could have quibbled about the allocation formula. So, you know, the people I represent, you know, Grand Rapids got, I think, three times more money per person than the city of Wyoming did, it's part of my district, and seven times more than the, than Byron Township did. And that allocation, I, I understand. Mr. Chairman, there's one thing I don't understand about the process, which is, so Kent County has been, I think, extraordinarily, like, open about soliciting, you know, feedback and ideas from the community. And I think it's been an overwhelming number of ideas, and certainly we, we, through this process, have found we can't fund even close to, you know, a majority of the projects. But what I don't, don't understand really is, you know, so Kent County got $127 million and put $116 and change into this open, public process. While the city of Grand Rapids had $92 million and only put $2 million into an open and public process, I, I don't understand that. But again, I'm sitting on, you know, just the Kent County Board here. So I, I appreciate all the work that's gone into taking 90% of the funds we have available and, and making it open to the community in a transparent and thorough way. I, I, I know that's been a lot of extra work, and, Mr. Chairman, I'm sure there's been times you maybe wished we had done a simpler version with less, less public projects. But in the end, I think there's been a lot of good, and there's a number of, of good projects that just aren't, aren't getting funded in this, in this resolution. And that's just the reality of the resources available. I, I do want to mention specifically, so in the, the ranking exercise, which I, I found kind of fun, you know, to use those, you know, clickers and see it pop up on the screen and everything. The, the diatribe, I found a very interesting project and was kind of well-designed in a number of ways. I, I actually, you know, personally in the ranking, I, I wanted to see that one get a little more due diligence. And so I ranked that high. I, I gave it a five. I think with the additional due diligence, just about, you know, the, the organizational size and the project size and all of that, I, I think it's the right, the right choice that it didn't end up making the cut. But I, I just want to express to Marcel particularly my appreciation. He took time to chat with myself and my daughter about the project, and, you know, I, I love his energy, and I'm, I'm happy to extend just a personal invitation to Marcel to sit down later after this process and, and dive into the details more of my perspective on, on the whole process and, and all the details. So I, I just wanted to make that an opportunity if it's, if it's helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Skegs.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I want to thank everyone from the public who came out to this session and, and to all the sessions that we've had. I'll be honest, I wish we had listened to you more. And thanks to my colleagues who have spoken. I'm sick to my stomach. I didn't sleep last night. We had a real opportunity here to, to take this money that came to us to do what it was meant for, to make real transformational change in our community, to deal with the economic effects of the pandemic, to deal with longstanding disparities. And I know people tried, but we just didn't quite get there. And that's tough.
Commissioner, make sure you address me. Thank you.
I am addressing you. I'm just not looking at you.
You don't have to look at me.
The, unfortunately, the, the project got bogged down in some pet projects. Let's really be honest here. A program for a theater renovation that shows no sustainability to actually work. Subsidizing anti-union construction companies. A library in Rockford. Called my city manager, you know, "We passed our library in East Grand Rapids. It's a beautiful library. A lot of people come there." You're all welcome. You are too, Mr. Chair. But we paid for it. That's how KDL works. But votes needed to be had. And so it's on there. Pickleball courts are in here. Pickleball courts. This is transformational change, according to some. And $8.5 million for roads. Not in cities. We pay for our roads. I got two mills on my tax bill. City pays income taxes, but we're going to add it on even though we got infrastructure money coming behind this, even though the governor is fixing the roads. And worst of all, the majority party deleted a plan for diatribe, not based on merit. It's a program that's- But based it on politics and based it on fear that people would be primaried. Shameful, embarrassing. There are good things in here. Commissioner Wooden spoke of them. $17.5 million for affordable housing, $4 million for a behavioral crisis center. It's going to be changing in people's lives. It's going to be important. $15 million for parks. That's also going to be transformational. $4 million for coordinated responses to domestic violence. $3 million for safe drinking water to deal with PFAS. $6 million for CDFIs, Hispanic and African-American-run community development financial institutions. A million for African-American, to deal with African-American health. A million for, to deal with African-American workforce training. $7 million for the zoo. There's a lot of good things in here. There's a lot of good things. There's a lot of bad things. It isn't what I wanted. It's not perfect. I think Commissioner Bolkowski mentioned this. It's a balancing act that we all have to do. It's a tough balancing act. It's sick to my stomach. I didn't sleep last night. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Womack.
Thank you. I want to thank my colleagues, Commissioner McLeod and Commissioner Sparks, for their statement because it covered a lot that I can skip over when it comes to wanting to see more inclusion. Also, I want to pick up where Commissioner Coleman said with Grand Rep is getting 92 million dollars and then at the last second advertising to the Third Ward this big lottery of for ideals for only 1 million. There's not too many projects that we're doing in the Third Ward that we're not giving a million is the minimum. So we've done 10 times more. From what I'm seeing, without, it's going to take some further investigation in the city of Grand Rapids. And as Commissioner Coleman said, letting that 117 million be viewed by the entire public. Whenever I'm a part of something, whether it's my human body, my family, my religion, groups I'm a part of, I do everything I can to make myself better and those around me better and discipline myself, call myself to task. Of the of this proposal, 40% of what Democrats put in was voted in by the entire committee. 25% of what the Republicans put up was voted in by the party. Then we have some staff, then we have consensus above with both groups. So with 40% of what we put in, United Methodist was on there, of course, Diatribe, which I rated with a top highest score, was in there. But Transformational Center, even though that's not totally owned by African-Americans, but this program that is going to be done by an African-American with the Bean, Mr. Bean that's ahead of that, and the children we've seen in it being primary people of color, because that's that's something I talk about. Transformational Center was not on our list. Urban League was not on our list that made it through. Grahai was not on our list. So even within our own party, we could have sent forth a more inclusive. And then as the county as a whole, there are some things we can do. So I've already talked about some of the bad things that that are going on. The great thing is coming out of here is that when we talk about the community development financial institution, the CDFI with Urban League with 4 million, with the 2 million for the Hispanic Center, that's a historical transformational thing that should have been done by the city of Grand Rapids with their 92 million. So I'm glad Kent County stepped up and did something that is going to be way more historical. I feel like a husband who's watching his child born, but at the same time, his wife dies at the same time. There's so much, there's good, there's so much good, and then there's some bad. But I I will say that there's hope for the future and as Democrats should embrace the Diatribe because the county is not the only funding that's out here. If you just look at the money that's been raised for all the campaign, all this money that went from both parties for elections, we can, we can raise the money to get this building done. So I don't want Diatribe to just say, hey, we came to Kent County, that's the end. We're 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 commissioners from Grand Rapids. We're the we're the ones to get the majority of votes in Grand Rapids. We we should continue to do what we can do to help Diatribe get that building. But one thing I will say about this entire commission here, when I look at the CARES Act, when I look at the when I look at the ARPA funds, this section, these commissioners, Democrat and Republicans, both, credit goes to because it's historically gave more money to the Third Ward and African-Americans than any before. So as small as this looks, can you imagine when I was coming up here 20 years ago, you know, trying to get money into this into our community? So I would, I would definitely push Monica Sparks to run for minority vice chair real soon. Or Michelle, we, I always said, we're going to talk about making sure we're inclusive. We need African-Americans in that executive boardroom. We need it where it's not second chance, happenstance. And I'm going to continue to push for that. I know a lot of people may not understand the importance of that. I know it's brought ear from me from both parties because I always, I I think it would make a a big difference. So I I just want to put the truth out there. I could come out here, slam, this is the worst party ever, boo boo boo. But the truth is, this this is transformational. The CDFI is not over for Diatribe in leadership. If we continue to tell our youth, there's going to be bad. And and there's groups here today that's getting funded that have had no's and came for our advice and they collaborated. And now they're on sides that say yes. So our thing is to find ways around the problem and continue to work with you. And I tell you, the truth don't sound as good as rhetoric, but the truth will set you free. We should be challenged to continue to support Diatribe through our philanthical basis, through anything we can. And I I want to thank Diatribe because even taking a no, you express yourself so intelligently. Because one thing I learned in life, just because there's a no today, this is the last funds that this county going to get. I believe there will be a day that Diatribe comes in here and the county does support them. I think the way you express yourself as youth, I think people expected you to come in here in a whole different fashion. You express yourself very well, very better than the commissioners. Many of us commissioners up here, because what you're saying is no rhetoric in it, it's just the truth. You you're out there, you're helping the youth, and and I believe that the conversation will continue. And and that is the truth with no spin. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. I I don't want to belabor too many points because my colleagues have said a lot of it very well, particularly David Bukowski, who hit the nail on the head that the victors get the spoils, the majority really gets to, you know, make a lot of the final decisions or put their finger more heavily on the scale. But also, as DeAndre said, starts to feel like family. You know, all of us up here do have to pick a side when we run for office, when we want to serve. We have to pick a team. Voters don't have to do that. We have to do that. And and DeAndre was correct that we don't always all get along or agree on all our projects. And Commissioner Coleman said not one of us would have exactly this list before us today with this money that's left to be delivered. I really kind of miss our consultant, David Sernick, right now. He started us off on this journey and he, the first time we had the opportunity to ask questions, one of the questions I asked was housing, because that's really important to me. I said, is, would that be a favored outcome? And he said, absolutely, highly favored. And we asked roads, would that be? No, ARPA does not like roads. And here, I I'm thrilled with money going into the revolving fund. Really thrilled with that, the possibility of matching it and having a much bigger fund. That is going to be great. But roads to the tune of 50% of that, that I I can't even, that I can't really even contemplate. But, you know, there it is. And and I and he also said, we really want to be focusing on transformational, transformational. And we do have projects that I am really excited about. I sit on the Network 180 Board. We have hardly talked about the Behavioral Crisis Center. But that is going to be transformational. It's not going to be perfect. We're going to have, work out a lot of bugs as we go along, but it's going to be transformational. It's going to really help change how we treat people with mental health emergencies in our community. The AYA Youth Collective, we haven't said a thing about that, really, really at-risk youth, homeless youth. You know, I I I trust that they will do great things with that money. The Wyoming Project, I feel, is a very transformational project for that community. And not not just for that community, but anyone who passes through 28th Street Southwest over there. Domestic violence, we haven't talked about that at all today. That was a huge problem because of the pandemic, an enormous problem, a problem that's often hidden. And and to be able to to fund that and say that we're going to be part of that work, that is transformational. Lead remediation, we know we've got the worst zip code in the state for for lead poisoning. And and looking at some real investment in some permanent remediation, that is transformational. And with Commissioner Skaggs, I can't see pickleball courts is transformational. I can't see a library, which, I mean, I'm, I'm, I know Rockford's a nice place, but I'm not going to use their library, 2 million for that. There's a lot of people in Kent County who are who are never going to step up to that library. So those are really, and and to say that, it is great that we are putting money in these CDFIs. And and I understand that the CDFIs were not, that was a changing rule, so that wasn't at the beginning of our process, that wasn't allowed. That is wonderful. It's great that we're putting 6 million dollars total into those CDFIs for the Hispanic Center and for the African-American community. That is wonderful. And it's great that that money can be matched. That was another one of our consultants' points, was that this money should be matched. It should be matched wherever possible to increase the transformational impact. So I I'm glad that we're able, that we're going to be able to do that. Another thing he said, and and I want people to hold out some hope from that, was that we knew we wouldn't be able to fund everything, but that this process would unearth ideas, projects that would deserve funding from other sources and should be considered in the future. And, Mr. Chair, Mr. Administrator, I really, really hope that you will take that into consideration. And I hope that that 9 million doesn't just disappear somewhere quietly. You know, we've got 9 more million. You know, if we see some real successes here, I really hope that we will double down on some of these good investments, these transformational investments. Sorry, I have a lot of notes here. But anyway, I I think that's where I am. And the last thing I really want to say is that the Diatribe is not on this list and that decision has obviously been made. But I really invite all of my colleagues here to get to know what they've done, because I promise you, they've done work in your district. I promise you that they've done really good work in your district among people who really need it. And, you know, you're you're out of danger here, but you can still learn what they're doing. And and you can, you can see a lot of really fantastic work that's going on. And I really, I invite you and I encourage you to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Hennessy.
I agree with what Commissioner Legrand just said in that my colleagues, all of whom have spoken before me, have spoken very well on on the ups and the downs, the the joys and the frustrations of this project. I was talking with my husband and we were, we were thinking of Michael Ochshatz, who's a conservative political scientist, who talked about the idea that the task of politics is conversational and and then makes judgments. And so in funding the projects, we emphasize conversation and then we implicitly will make judgments based on it. Commissioner Wooden was deprecating his own skills and value and taking blame for some of the decisions made. He ought not to. I do think that the conversation could have been better and included us. The the ranking was very good, but since then, it's been more or less feeding us the information of how it will be. And I think the conversation fell short in that many, in that the the main crux of, you know, these decisions could have been solved more and could have been resolved with more talk between us. And I will say that. And I was reading from one of our proposals websites and the idea that people, you know, the idea is to make people feel empowered and inspired with new understanding that their voice matters and that someone is listening. And it also goes on that in teaching students about housing, about housing discrimination, redlining, gentrification, and how housing impacts every aspect of our life. And it includes education. It includes includes water quality. It, you know, it includes every aspect of our life. And, you know, this is the the group that that comes into classrooms and teaches this that's been omitted today. And I will say, Commissioner Antor referenced boats. And so I will leave you with a boat quote. "At times, we all feel fragile. We are paper boats entertaining the waves of life." And this comes from Marcel the Fable Price, and it's published on the Experience Grand Rapids webpage.
All right. Anyone else? You've already had a chance. I'll get back to you if we have a second. Okay, go ahead, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I just want to acknowledge that this is historic. You know, we have not, in my term here as a commissioner, had this sort of, you know, amount of dollars to spend to hand out. And it's historic. I think we need to make a note of that. And there's been a lot of hours spent talking about this, learning about the projects, rating the projects. I can't say that I'm 100% pleased with everything. I think, like, I can agree with many of you, but I feel like this is, it's been discussed. These are, we're putting our best foot forward here. And I think it's a gift. It's a gift to the community. You know, I don't envision us handing out these sort of dollars anytime soon. I hope we don't. It was quite the process. It was a long process, checking through everything, verifying. And, you know, I'm grateful for our staff who answered every email, answered our concerns from commissioners to community members, to people who have submitted proposals. I am gracious to our county administrator for the time he spent and for, you know, Stan Steck and Commissioner Wooden, for all the time they spent doing this. And so what we have here is, I think it's a a gift to the community. I'm, I do think there are transformational projects in part of this. And I'm really excited to see what comes about with the housing. I'm thankful that we can put some of these funds towards addressing the lead issue. I chaired the Lead Task Force a number of years ago, and we still have lead in our community. This is one huge step to managing it. And it's not just taking care of it in one municipality, this is a countywide issue. I think you can find something in this proposal for every community. There's a way, you know, we have the Grand Agricultural Center of West Michigan. That's something, you know, in my rural district that people support, but it's also a great way to engage people in the entire county. So to look beyond the area that we're living in and to to check things out elsewhere. So there's something for everyone in here. And I just am grateful for the time that everyone has dedicated to this, the conversations. And just remember, this is historic. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. So over my tenure in elective office from school board, city council, and now county commission, you know, it's not always fun. And certainly, I voiced my displeasure about this commission before from agricultural issues. I sat on the land bank, helped get that thing going, and the successes we had to have that pulled under wasn't pleasing. I look at the list, and if I would be selfish, I would say there's nothing on this list from the city of Granville where I've lived all my life. But there are a lot of things on this list that the people that live in the community and the district that I represent are needed. Mental health services is one of the top ones that have been lacking for for some time. You know, I heard people said that, you know, they're not sleeping over this and couldn't get to sleep. You know, I turned my text messages in my phone off and my computer days ago. You know, it's really, I mean, if the audience thinks that we're all up here having a great time, no, it's not fun because the sad part of the day is that politics did enter into it. And it's not one side that's behind it, it's both sides. There's operatives on both political parties that want to see us divided and they want to see the community divided because they feel somehow there's a political gain somewhere. And that's just plain wrong. But that's the system that we But that's the system that we live into. But I think the thing I want to point out about is, yeah, this is a lot of money. And Commissioner Antor knows how I feel about the national debt. When I was on a school board, we had challenges every single year for the 21 years that I sat on that board. And it always seemed to come down, we need more money. And there's just, there's not enough, you know, not enough out there. If we truly want transformation in this committee and this community and this society, it's not going to be coming from the federal government. It's not going to come from money. It's going to come from the community coming together and making things a priority and working together, sitting down together, talking to each other. Because right now, what we've got is a very polarized system of politics, and it's only going to get worse. I mean, I could go down my list and tell you everything I, you know, voted for, how I ranked it. I will say this, is that if it had anything to do with arts, it ranked high with me. Because we live in a society where everyone feels that arts are just disposable. But they're not. They're the answer. And you can look at, though, you know, one is being highlighted, being shorted. There were a lot that were shorted. The Grand Rapids Symphony, who's been probably one of the leading arts organizations in this community for, what, over 40 years? They're in the schools, they're out in the community, spreading the word and the goodness of arts, performing arts. And, you know, we've got to sit down as a community to figure out what's important. And I bet you, if you'd go to any county government throughout the country, there isn't a line item for the support of the arts and culture and things that really help the community grow and work and be one together. Transformation comes from us, sitting down. It doesn't come from money. I mean, if you're going to rely on money for the rest of your life, we're going to be in trouble as a country. Because right now, that national debt's large. The biggest line item in the federal government budget next year will be the interest on paying down that debt. And imagine what we could be doing with that money if we'd only get our own fiscal house in order first. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? I know Commissioner Womack would like a second comment. Anyone wish to make a first comment? All right.
Thank you for my short second, short second.
You get a short second.
Yeah, I guess would be a miss if I did not come back on here and thank Steve Wooden for all his hard work on this. I mean, this guy stayed up day and night. I don't even think he got any sleep last night. He's really been pushing for DIA tribe. Also, I'm very happy with the comments from Commissioner Legrand, who's also been pushing and very hard. So it's not just lip service here. Also, I want to thank Commissioner Skaggs for his comments today. Commissioner Hennessy, everybody here. But being a Democrat, being able to see the work behind the scenes, I just want to definitely let the minority chair know, I appreciate your work. I think you did a great job. And a lot of times since I've been at the commission, as I pushed for first, as we finally saw the first black president during, you know, even during my term here. A lot of times when I pushed for first, when it comes to African-Americans and our Hispanic brothers and sisters and with the women, that's never to disrespect those that are in position or say they're not doing their job. But there's just some things that a woman is going to see in life that I will never understand, and it's vice versa. But Steve, I just really want to salute you on your efforts and your work and all that you did accomplish. That's something I told you the other day. We didn't get everything we wanted, but it does not take away from some major victories like the CDFI, just so many other things in there. And once again, I did score DIA tribe high because I believe in the arts. And I look forward to continue to work with them.
All right. Okay, yes, Commissioner McLeod, your second and shorter comment.
Yes, thank you, Chair, second and short, I promise. So I just want to also just thank, you know, our commission leadership, you know, the chair, our administrator, staff, everybody that worked on this. My comments earlier were emotional, and I apologize for that. But I kind of apologized, right? Because I think that it needed to be said. But I also realize that there's a lot of good that's in this group of, in this list of items that will be funded. And I will be supporting it for that reason. Because again, as Commissioner Womack had mentioned, there's a lot of things in here that will provide some transformational opportunities for the communities that were most impacted by this pandemic. And I just wanted to make sure that I came back around and just said that I do appreciate all of the work that has been done by everyone that's been, you know, negotiating and really bringing, you know, their priorities to the table. I just really want us to continue to focus our resources and our efforts to really support the communities in the county that have been left off of the, out of consideration for so long. We've heard our community members say that, you know, the 49507, other areas that have been disinvested in for years. This was our opportunity to make that right. And I don't feel that we hit the bar. And so I feel that we need to just continue to lift that up as a priority for the commission to make sure that we choose equity, inclusion, fairness in everything that we do. I am still proud of the fact that we now have, you know, personnel that are focused on that. But this process could have been the end part of the process. I think it started out that way. I just don't feel like it ended that way. And so I feel like we need to make sure that if we start a process that's, you know, transparent and inclusive, that we end the process the same way. So I would just implore us to do that. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Antor, number two in the short version.
Short, and I appreciate if you could give me a little attitude here. Can I ask you one quick question about the process as part of my public comment to Al?
Not as part of public comment, but you can ask a question as part of the debate, yes.
Okay. How many asks did we originally get before we went through and weeded out the ones?
Over 300.
Over 300. And how many ultimately were chosen?
30.
Okay. So we had these 270 different asks that were not?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. If that's it, you'll allow me a few comments as the chair here. So this has been a challenging process. In fact, in my years on the commission, I would say this has been the most challenging work this commission has done over these past eight years. And interestingly enough, it's not one we asked for. It's one that the federal government dished to us and said, okay, here it is. When we started that, we made the decision to, instead of internalizing the application of this money, to push this to the community and ask the community to participate as the applicators for this money, at least most of it. I think when we started that process, we understood that that would push us as a board to our political limits. It would push us to our capacity to engage and to compromise and to reach conclusions. Because this was never going to be easy. And it hasn't been easy. Fact is, we ended up with $3 billion of asks from our community. And when that happened, it guaranteed most of you out there would be disappointed. Most of you. Because we only had 127 million to spread over $3 billion of asks. We had 300 projects, and we could only fund a few. So with our eyes open, we went in and proceeded with a project that we knew was going to leave many of you disappointed. But committed that at the end of the day, we would do the best we can to find those projects that would be acceptable across this very diverse board and a diverse community and a diverse county that would in fact make a difference. It's been said before, and I'll say it again, there's not a single member of this board who would have written this allocation. No one. I have sat in the center of these debates, along with Commissioner Wooden. And I'll guarantee you, none of you had a project spread that looked like this. Those of you that represent the urban core had a spread that looked one way. Those of you that live and represent the suburban donut had a spread that looked quite different. Those of you that live and represent the rural areas had something that looked quite different. We know in our county, we have approximately 200,000 residents in the city of Grand Rapids. We have about 200,000 in the donut area, and we have about 250,000 in the rural township area. All of those individuals have quite different experiences in life. And each of you represent different areas that have different experiences. And so when it came to the task of asking you to identify those projects that you think are transformational, I expected each of you to look at it from the perspective of where you sit. And you know what? When you came back at it, you came back with different ideas. Those of you that represent the city of Grand Rapids had a specific idea of what transformation looks like. Those of you that represent townships had quite a different perspective. Not surprising at all, is it? So this process, in order to be equitable, to be fair, to represent the entire diverse county, was a very daunting task for you. It required every one of you to go into this process, prepared to not just define what you thought was transformational, but be open to listening to what would be transformational in other segments of this county, your colleagues. And to recognize that they see it quite differently. But at the end of the day, for us to take this lottery win, if you will, and push it out there so that it can make a difference across all those segments mandated you to compromise, to accept that somebody else's perspective is and might be different. So that's what we did. It wasn't easy. Probably most of you noticed, we were still talking after we called the order here today in order to do that. And we knew that when we did this, when we identified these projects, there were going to be projects that each commissioner is going to say, I don't like that. And there's also going to be lots of projects, a lot of projects, and great quality projects that aren't going to make the list. Not because they're bad projects, but just because they didn't make the list. Because this process required us to basically compromise, keep our eyes on the goal, so that the end of this process, we do come to a conclusion that does allow us to push this money out into the community and make a difference. Is it a perfect resolution? It is not. If we had a vote today, is this the perfect resolution? The vote is 19-0. No. 18-0, sorry, thank you. That's what it is. If it is to vote for only those projects that are high-quality and great transformational projects, then we'd probably have 250, not 30. But that's not before us. We can't do that. We have to find a way of using this complicated, convoluted, I use the word chunky, political process of coming together from disparate areas, disparate political perspectives, and at the end of the day, say, can we formulate something that makes a difference? I submit that we've done that. Not perfectly, we've not done it perfectly. And I love Commissioner Ponstein's comments. This is not the end of what it takes to transform a community. By no means. It barely is the beginning. And those of you out there that aren't going to get funded in this ultimate project process should never walk away and say, oh, that's terrible, we're done, close up shop. This is the beginning. Every one of you ought to be able to move with those visions and those inspirations and go forward. And we stand ready to participate with that. Are you disappointed if you were a project that didn't get selected? Absolutely. Would you love to have been on that list? Absolutely. Could we have done better? Probably. I think, though, that this represents a fair compromise between these diverse perspectives, both political perspectives, social perspectives, economic perspectives, and identified an allocation that those of you in the townships can say, okay, there's a change available here in my area. Those in the suburban area can say, there's possibility for changes that we can accomplish here in this area. And those of you in the urban core can identify, look at, there are projects here specifically focused to make a big difference in the urban area. That's the compromise this represents. Not perfect, but I acknowledge all of you for staying on task, doing something that probably many said, it's a fool's errand, you shouldn't have started this to begin with. But here we are. And we're going to push about $100 million out into the community and start making a difference. So thank you for that. I hope you support this resolution and let us roll up our sleeves and move forward. With that, did I exceed my six minutes? Probably. All right. With that, Madam Clerk, this is a roll call vote. Would you please take the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 12-122-121, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brevi.
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Bolter.
Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor. Green.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 12-122-121 is adopted.
Thank you. A break?
Yes.
We don't take breaks in meetings. I've had a technical request for a five-minute break. I will, she's leaving either way. We'll take a five-minute break.
That was great.
I presented it.
You know, it might have been the best thing I've ever heard.
You know, I could, I could honestly, I didn't like to say it, but Bolkowski, the voters decided.
Absolutely, I'd love to say it. That was fantastic.
I'd love to say, that was fantastic.
That was phenomenal.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you for coming back. Wasn't sure you'd all come back. All right, let's move to the next item on our agenda, which is item 8B, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move today's Senior Millage allocations for 2023 from the Administrator's Office of today's date.
Great. It is supported by Commissioner Coleman. Any comments or questions? I know we have representatives from the Senior Millage here today. Good morning, Kendrick. Thank you for being so patient. As you know, our meetings aren't always like this. All right, any questions or comments with respect to the Senior Millage allocation resolution? Yes, Commissioner Bolkowski, I think I know what you're going to say.
Yeah, I'm just going to keep my streak alive and abstain both from this and the next item since disability advocates as a Senior Millage Provider Agency.
Understood, and your request to abstain is granted. Yes, Commissioner Hennessy?
Thank you. I think it would be useful for Kendrick to become his second director of the area agency to hear all that about my whole review of this.
Make it worth his while to sit here. Yes.
Sure. Can he introduce his new staff member?
Yes, great. That's a great idea. Kendrick, will you just give us a brief summary of this and introduce your new...
Yes, first I'll introduce. I have Sally Andrietta with me today, who is our new Director of Contract Services. I brought Sally along. She started with us October 3rd. So I will field the questions today, but from here on out, anything Kent County Senior Millage or Older American Act will run through Sally's department and her oversight. So with the Kent County Senior Millage, we are made up of a nine-person committee. We have three Kent County Commissioners. We have a representative from the Kent County Administrator's Office. And then we have community members, which make up throughout the community the population that we are looking to advocate for, which are older adults and caregivers who are 60 and older and live throughout Kent County. We go through an open process each year. We call it a Letter of Intent, more commonly referred to as an RFP, where we look for new services. This year, our service intent was mental health and technology. Those were the areas of focus that were identified that we saw coming out throughout the pandemic. From then, we go through a proposal process where we put together the proposals at the area agency and present them to that nine-person committee. We have three days of discussion where we bring in the organizations who filled out a proposal to be able to discuss those proposals in front of the committee. It allows for the committee to be able to ask questions. It allows for staff members to be able to fill in the committee on anything that might come up because, as we know, what you put on paper isn't always the full preview of what you see for an organization. After that, we take a two-day recess to go over our final recommendations, and we reconvene that following Monday to finalize our funding decisions. So it is a process that we're very proud of. We feel like it works very efficiently. It's very equitable, and that is the process you see that you are voting on before you here today.
Great, thank you. Any follow-up, Commissioner?
Thank you. You've done a good job of describing the process, and many of the people around this board have, and I think Commissioner Coleman wants to speak too, you know, because this is a good process. And it is one, I talked earlier about conversation, and this is one where you start a conversation with the Letter of Intent. You talk about it. You might visit an agency, especially if they're a new proposing agency. This year, because there was a millage election, that meant that everything started again. We met with every one of the 30-plus agencies and considered them anew under the new millage approval that was given. And at the end, it's really interesting because the conversations continue at every point. But at the end, when you have all of the votes in, you've looked at the high, you've looked at the low, you've averaged things out, and then you get together and you talk about it one more time. And you, you know, is this okay with you? Can you live with this? What is your reason for that? And so the conversation continues. And no political process, and it is, you know, it involves individuals, nine people who are representative, so it becomes political in one way or another, whether it be party or not, but it comes an interest-type of thing. It's a process that has worked well. It's been refined over the years. And I think we could, you know, really be proud of for how it represents the use of the funds to serve our older Americans and to meet its goal of keeping people successfully, happily, in their own homes or in the place where they choose to be living.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Coleman, first then.
Thank you, Chair. Just briefly, I just want to say thanks to my fellow Commissioners, Commissioner Hennessy and McLeod. Great working on the committee together. And the staff of AAA is always fantastic, keeping us organized, giving us all the details, working with the various agencies. This year was a little bit easier, just the funding amount, because the renewal and the election in August, you know, reset any headly rollback, you know, that kind of stuff. So, but in the future, that'll be a factor. And given some of the priorities of Senior Millage funding, just so my fellow Commissioners know, you know, future years may be challenging in these allocations, just because you think of Meals on Wheels, Hope Network, you know, others. There's a lot of food. There's a lot of transportation needs that are funded through the millage. And as we all know in our personal lives, you know, food and fuel, you know, costs are, have been and are continuing to go up at a rapid pace. So that may be a future challenge as we look at it, but awesome process, and thanks to everyone involved.
Great, thank you. I think Commissioner Ponstein and Commissioner McLeod, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'll just be brief, Chair. So I just want to point out that, you know, once again, these dollars are going to go to some good programs, some needs that we have in our community. And this is a fund that the taxpayers said, "We already fund the county government, and we fund a lot of the services, but we want to do more." And they've supported that millage, and they've supported the community. And a lot of times, the money they're sending will never impact their lives, but it's certainly impacting Kent County. And I think we've got to remember that, is that these programs are being funded, and they're funded locally by the people that live and support this community.
Thank you. Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to say, as a first time being involved in this process, that I thought it was a really great experience. I feel like Kendrick and his staff did a really, really good job with ensuring that the nine-member committee really understood the needs of the community and focused in on the areas that really kind of bubbled up during COVID as really areas that our seniors really needed assistance. And so I feel like this list of agencies and the services that they're providing will really bring some, really, I feel like, almost transformational impact in that community in terms of ensuring that they are actually able to, you know, support themselves and age well in their own, in their own homes or in their own spaces. So I just appreciate the process, and I thought it was a great process. It was very long. It was one full week of, you know, intense work, but it was a great process, and I hope to see it continually improve as we move forward. And looking forward to working with you as well.
Yep, thank you. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I also have sat on the committee in the past and want to share that as my eight years as a Commissioner, this topic comes up often, and it comes up on social media. It comes up when I'm in conversations, when I'm in meetings. It is very important that we are advocates to our community to let them know that this $11.9 million is a priority for our community that voted to pay additional tax dollars for this purpose. So I really encourage you to continue your outreach, to continue to let people know. I cannot count the number of people who have said, "I have no idea." And I send them your way regularly. So please use this information for those who are watching at home as Commissioners, as those in the audience, to know if you know a senior who needs additional services to contact the area on aging, because this is $11.9 million that is there to assist with so many needs to help seniors stay in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else first? All right, Commissioner Womack.
I just want to thank Commissioner McLeod and Commissioner Hennessy for their work on the committee. I want to thank the area agency on aging with Western Michigan, your whole executive committee, staff, and all the great partners you're working on for protection of our seniors and providing services for our seniors. They're much needed. It's definitely something I'll be supporting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm sure he meant to also thank you, Commissioner Coleman, so.
Yes, and a Republican, Commissioner Coleman. Thank you for serving on it.
Speaking of which, Commissioner Coleman, for a second.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Jones mentioned the amount, which made me realize I was remiss in mentioning if Commissioners wonder, wasn't it more last year? It was, and that's because this is a nine-month allocation to a line of the fiscal year. So just so that's clear.
All right. Again, thank you, Kendrick, for being here. Thank you both for joining us. Thank you for all the work. Also, thank you for the Commissioners that sit on that allocation committee. I also have sat on that for many years, and so I have some sense about how much work that takes. It is, it's a daunting assignment to do that. But I think that this proves that we invented transformation before we ever heard of ARPA. So thank you for your work.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you for your support.
You haven't voted yet.
All the excitement. Sorry about that.
Move the table. No, just...
No, no. I will call the question and ask the clerk to go ahead and take the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 12-122-122, Commissioners Skaggs...
Yes.
Wooden...
Yes.
Womack...
Yes.
Bolkowski...
Abstain.
LeGrand...
Yes.
Hennessy...
Yes.
McLeod...
Yes.
Sparks...
Yes.
Teal... Vice Chair Breavy...
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman...
Yes.
Burl...
Yes.
Ponstein...
Yes.
Foulter... Jones...
Yes.
Morgan...
Yes.
Antor...
Yes.
Green...
Yes.
Chair Stuck...
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 16 yays, zero nays, and one abstention. The motion passes. Resolution 12-122-122 is adopted.
Thank you. If you'll stick around, the next one is Senior Millage as well. So I will now call on Commissioner Wooden for item 8, or 7C.
Thank you, Chair. I move adoption of Resolution 123 of today's date. It is the 2022 Senior Millage Fund Budget Amendment. It comes to us from the Administrator's Office.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments? I don't see any, so this is a roll call as well. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 12-122-123, Commissioners Skaggs...
Yes.
Wooden...
Yes.
Womack...
Yes.
Bolkowski...
Abstain.
LeGrand...
Yes.
Hennessy...
Yes.
McLeod...
Yes.
Sparks...
Yes.
Teal... Vice Chair Breavy...
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman...
Yes.
Burl...
Yes.
Ponstein...
Yes.
Foulter... Jones...
Yes.
Morgan...
Yes.
Antor...
Yes.
Green...
Yes.
Chair Stuck...
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 16 yays, zero nays, and one abstention. The motion passes. Resolution 12-122-123 is adopted.
Thank you. All right.
All right, one more time. Thank you for your support.
All right, we'll move to item 7D, and I'll call on Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move item 12-122-124 for Thornapple River Bend green space acquisition from the Parks Department.
Support.
Supported by Vice Chair Breavy. Comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I see the ask here is fairly nominal, $67,000. Do we have an idea how much additional maybe maintenance or equipment-related type for this acquisition? Is it, are we going to cover all the maintenance and things that need to be done there with our current fleet or stock?
Do you want to answer that, or is Dan here?
I'd like to have Dan answer that.
Dan DeLu from Parks. Good morning, Dan.
Yes, currently, the way it's situated, we will be able to absorb that operating budget.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Yes, Commissioner LeGrand.
Can you just untangle the numbers here for me a second? The original price that we were going to pay was $67,001. Are we still paying that, or are we just talking about a transfer here?
So we need an additional $120,500 on top of that $67,000.
Okay, and that, is it a transfer from this, or is this is just coming up?
It will transfer from, yeah, so Trail CIP into the CIP.
Got you. Thank you.
All right, any other comments, questions? I see none, so Madam Clerk, will you please take a roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 12-122-124, Commissioners Skaggs...
Yes.
Wooden...
Yes.
Womack...
Yes.
Bolkowski...
Yes.
LeGrand...
Yes.
Hennessy...
Yes.
McLeod...
Yes.
Sparks...
Yes.
Teal... Vice Chair Breavy...
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman...
Yes.
Burl...
Yes.
Ponstein...
Yes.
Foulter... Jones...
Yes.
Morgan...
Yes.
Antor...
Yes.
Green...
Yes.
Chair Stuck...
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 12-122-124 is adopted.
Thank you very much. That is the last of our resolutions for today. Now move to item 8, which is the second opportunity for public comment. If anyone wishes to address the Board with respect to matters that are within our general jurisdiction, you may do so. You've got to let me at least finish here, John. If you'll please identify yourself and where you live. And again, you have up to two minutes. And the little chiming thing means you've exceeded your two minutes.
Mr. Chair, I do have cards, so after Mr. Jones speaks.
Oh, okay. All right, so people have already signed up. Fair enough. All right, we'll let you go ahead, Dion.
I appreciate that, Board Chair. How you doing, everybody? Had to take off my stuff because I had to bring myself back to when I was a kid, and I was that nappy-head kid running around, like my hair is very nappy. Probably ain't brushed my hair in days, to be honest. But I've just been out in the community doing a lot of different things. First of all, I want to apologize to the staff and everybody else for the Hustler magazine shirt. I didn't, I don't think that even if I wore that shirt or not, that I would have got ARPA funding, but I have to say as a joke, because people like to crack jokes on me, I got a good joke, man. We stayed in the United States, and our president had a wife that was an adult film star. And I just find it crazy that when I express my passion or freedom of expression, it's not really free. And I would like to ask Donald Trump what he thinks about that and have a conversation. But I think that's, I think that's pretty crazy that, that we just got so many barriers in freedom of speech and freedom of expression is not really free. It comes at a price. It comes at a price of possibly not getting funded. It comes at a price of possibly not getting anything. It comes at a price of people looking at you different. But the thing about me is, I'm a very passionate person. And before I sit there in front of a group of people who are shy with a heart of passion, I'd rather stick my tongue out with a nasty mouth. And so I don't deceive myself being fake. I'm a real, authentic person. I'm a genuine human being. I have a heart full of passion. I got dreams. I got goals. Everybody got wants and needs. Everybody got things that they fantasize about, but I don't like to play to people's fantasies. I'm a realistic person, and I live in reality. And I believe we create our reality with our actions, our thoughts, and our opinions. You may have your religious beliefs and different things, but I believe we coexist, and I can always agree to disagree with you and still support you. So freedom of speech and freedom of expression is not really free. And I apologize for being passionate, for offending you. Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. It gives many of us a great story to tell. And I'm sure that your shirt had nothing to do with any decision. Some found it endearing, some found it distracting. And I'm sure you still have the shirt, and I'll see it on the street one of these days.
Next, we have Asia Horn. And on deck, we have Jess Savino.
Oh, 11:11. I guess it was my time for real.
Can you pull the mic down just a little?
Yes, I can. So speaking towards just the power of this community, like, I'm so grateful to be in community with you guys. And I say that because something that I've been learning as somebody who is passionate about the city is that it comes down to doing the work. We can talk, we can talk, we can talk, but who's doing the work? Who's doing the work? Who do you see out in the streets? Who do you see out in the schools? Who do you see in the communities really making the changes for these voices to be heard for the futures of our youth? And that is something that the Diatribe has dedicated themselves to. That is their mission, to make sure that the future is visible and possible for the youth here in Grand Rapids and beyond. So I wanted to hold you guys to task and to be accountable because I've heard the words that "this is just the beginning. There's so much work to be done." And there is. And the fact that there's still available funding, it's work to be done, and it's still bucks to be passed around. So I want you guys to take that into account. And I'm a big word person. And the motto of Grand Rapids is "multivanier." And I don't think a lot of people looked into the definition of it, and it means strength in activity. And that's something that really stood out to me because Grand Rapids is positioned to be such a progressive place, you know, to where it looks like we're making all these strides. But where are we truly making strides? Where are we truly pushing the envelope to see this change that we've been hypothetically talking about for years and years? When is it actually going to happen? And the fact that you guys have the position to help the community when we bring our voices to this podium, you guys are in these positions. Voted, elected officials, you guys are in these positions to help your communities. And especially with us being based in Grand Rapids. Grand Rapids has huge force, and we need homes and safe spaces here for our futures to thrive, for our kids. That's the biggest thing. And I speak that as a creative from this city, who stayed in this city, who left the city, who came back to this city, because I know the potential that Grand Rapids has, and it won't come without work. So we're here working. Clearly, you see, we haven't left this room. We're still here, and we'll always be here. We'll always be here. And we'll always make sure that we're talking, and we'll make sure that our voices are heard. So I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jess Savino, and on deck, we have Christopher Talan.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for your time today, and my apologies for my voice. I stand before you because I have three reasons that I prepared before this meeting for why the Diatribe deserved your funding. But before I'm going to get into those, I'm going to say, "Shame on you," because no one else has said that yet. So let me be the first to say, "Shame on you." And let me tell you why I say that. I am a displaced survivor of domestic violence. And when I returned to 49507, to the home I grew up in, the Diatribe welcomed me. There was a mural opening on Division for Hugo Chavez. It was hosted by the Diatribe, and I brought my children there to celebrate. And I was welcomed, and there was food, and there was music, and there was camaraderie, and I felt like family. A place and a space softened the landing that my family and I had when we crashed back into my parents' home. We've had a lot of talk about conversations. We cannot have conversations right now because there's a clear barrier between us. There is a language barrier between a nonprofit organization based on using words for good and the county commission that is preventing them from being funded. We will never have a conversation because we speak different languages. I stand before you with a gift of discernment, and I will help you come to the conclusions that need to be shared for this community to thrive. This funding is being mishandled. Let me ask you, if everyone in the Diatribe looked like me, would this conversation be? I refuse to compromise on the power of my words. As a member and a resident of the '07, and a future member of the Diatribe, let me speak faster. Let me clarify the critical nature of community services provided by the Diatribe. Moreover, societies grow when people have places and spaces to engage, where talent can intersect with altruism. The Diatribe opens the door to our collective consciousness. It allows civic discourse to thrive against a backdrop of visual and spoken art. And finally, please help us build a thriving, livable community together. Perhaps you will be given a second chance.
Thank you.
Next, we have Christopher Talan, and on deck, we have Ada Rosian Nojani. Again, if I butchered that, please correct that.
Go ahead, please.
Don't look at me like I'm in trouble. The Diatribe is really important. I'm not from around here. I'm originally from Lansing area. Then I lived out of state for a while. I served two tours in Iraq with a Joint Forces Special Operations Unit. When I moved back here, I didn't know, as maybe some of you don't, that it wasn't until the '70s that black people were protected by law in this city from being discriminated against for housing, which means my parents, if they were black, wouldn't have a house to leave me. So think about that. I have a lot of things I want to say. I used to teach on the South Side. I had a student who had a gun pulled on him by the Grand Rapids Police. It was a big deal here because somebody called and said he had a gun that they saw it. Well, I live in Granville. I had a drug addict in my front yard, a white guy. I called the police department. It took them half an hour to show up after I called a second time, and they said, "Oh, we'll take him home." So there's a big disparity, and I know it's a matter of perspectives not aligning. And sometimes people come up here with a lot of passion, and it feels like an attack. It's not. It's just, they feel attacked. So I know it's too late. They don't have the money now, but give them a chance, please. If you said you haven't really done your due diligence investigating them, please do. They're important. I host a podcast that Marcella was on. I played a one-minute segment of that for my nine-year-old, and it brought him to tears. I don't know what to say. It's important. Please don't overlook them because you feel attacked. That's it.
Next, we have Ada Rosian Nojani, and on deck, we have Kimberly Williams.
Good morning. My name is Ada Rosian Nojani, and I'm here to tell you today was about choices. I made a choice in 2014 to move to Grand Rapids from Canada. I chose to buy a home here in 2018. I chose to become a public servant in this community of Kent County. I made those choices. And when I started working in Ottawa County as a public servant, I faced discrimination for the first time in my entire life. And I realized how privileged I had been not to experience that. But every time I drove back home, I felt safe. And that safety came from the leaders of the Diatribe. They created a space for me where I had nobody, and they made me feel safe. That is something that not a lot of people are capable of doing, especially to those who are outsiders. They are out here saving lives, and they're saving the lives of our youth, the ones that we are apparently making all these decisions for, right? Now, as a public servant, I tell my clients every day, "Choices have consequences." I know I made the right choice when I felt that elephant weight lift off my chest as I drive into Kent County. Now, you made choices today. You chose a library in a primarily white community, one that was able to get funding elsewhere, just as you told the Diatribe to do. You chose to value winning a primary over the lives of children in your own community. You chose to put politics before people. You chose to address the problem, not the root. You chose the health and homelessness situation of our minorities instead of choosing addressing the root of the problem, allowing the Diatribe to continue doing their... instead of choosing addressing the root of the problem, allowing the Diatribe to continue doing their work. Going into schools, teaching about mental health, teaching about housing inequality. You chose to wait till there was a bigger problem, till they needed a home to fund homelessness. You chose to fund mental health before addressing the root of that problem. Now, all choices have consequences, as I said. The consequence that you face is the next time a little black boy is gunned down on his bike, that's on you. You made this choice. You choose the consequence that the next time a gun is pulled out of graduation in this community, that's on you. You chose to fund something other than helping these youth. You chose that every child in this community that takes their lives, you chose to take away an opportunity for an organization to help them before that happened. And as an outsider, I have lots of pride in this community. I call this my home. And I am ashamed today. I'm ashamed of the people that I thought were actually looking out for us. And so, like my clients, every choice is a consequence. Someone will sit in juvenile detention or prison for their choices. You will have to go home. And every time something bad happens in this community with our youth, that's on you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Kimberly Williams. Kimberly Williams.
I'm back again. So Kimberly Williams, and I want to share just a couple thoughts as I've sat through this meeting. I understand your work is hard and that it can be difficult to remember why you do the work. So I want to take a moment to highlight the county seal for you. That seal displays, it's displayed in the carpet, on the wall. I see some of you with the lapel pinned on. I want you to bring your attention to that. The seal has a lamp of learning. That lamp of learning has to do with you seeking knowledge and wisdom. This is going to require you to do some additional work, to do some research, to learn about things that are beyond your immediate knowledge. So I challenge you to do that. It will require you to learn about all the citizens of Kent County, not just the ones in your district or your area. I challenge you to do that. It also has a scales of justice. And that is about fairness. Your scales are balanced. Sometimes we don't see those scales of justice balanced. Yours are balanced. So we ask that you remember that as you look into fairness, that you look for balance to bring equity throughout the entire county. And equity may not always mean giving those funds to who you think you should give them to or make policy for who you think should get it, but make sure you're remembering to be fair. This is going to be something that has to be intentional. I challenge you to be intentional about seeking that knowledge and wisdom and fairness. So when you enter these chambers, remember to take a look at that seal. When you put on that lapel, remember to look at that and what your charge is. You have to seek knowledge and wisdom and fairness. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
That's all the cards I have.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Anyone else who did not put their name on a card? Welcome back.
I am curious of how many letters you guys got. I know that a number of our students wrote in letters. Students who went to Caledonia, students who went to Byron Center, students who went to Forest Hills, Granville, a lot of your guys' districts. I'm also confused. You guys said a lot of compromises needed to be made. I'm curious how many ideas were in the top twelve that didn't make it. I reached out to you guys for months before this project, process started. I tried to sit down with everybody individually. Some people responded. Some people left the messages unread. But you could have learned all about us and our organization and me as an individual if you guys wanted to sit down and have a conversation. You guys said it was about conversations and crossing barriers, but a lot of people weren't interested. And I understand that the politics of our identities is why you guys voted against this, right? Again, you guys have a primary coming up and a lot of you guys were worried about being unseated. But for the people on each side of the aisle, this project meant a lot more than a library, right? This project meant a lot more than a lot of the projects that were funded. You guys made projects up to fill the gap that we would have been in. Like, this project meant a lot to people. It was a symbol, more than anything, that you can come to Grand Rapids and that you can create the change that you want to see. That you can pledge your life to this city. And if you do good and your intentions are right, that people will support you and honor you. And you guys showed us that that isn't the reality. It doesn't matter how many people you touch. It doesn't matter the good that you do. It doesn't matter how nonpartisan your politics are and the fact that kids from all around Kent County can appreciate what you do. That your political seat is all that you truly care about and not the people.
Can I get your name one more time? I'm sorry.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I don't see anyone else, so we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is our administrator report.
I really don't have much today. I'll keep it really short, but I did want to thank everybody involved with the ARPA process. It was a huge undertaking, commission, staff, public. It was just all-encompassing, all-consuming for a long period of time. So you have my thanks there. Also, just wanted to mention, in your inboxes, you do have my performance evaluation. I started month sixteen of my time back at Kent County this morning. And I do really value and need your input because that's part of the accountability relationship between a county administrator and the Board of Commissioners. And it fell after the fifteen months simply because we have eight of you leaving, or six of you leaving, eight new coming on, so the chair stuck and I decided that timing was better. If you're on exec, sorry, but you actually have two evaluations. So if you could get those turned in soon, we'd appreciate it. And that's all I have today.
All right, thank you, Al. Let's move to the next item on our agenda, which are reports. Any reports? I suspected we wouldn't have any, so fair enough. Let's move to the next item, which is miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous? Commissioner, yes, Commissioner Bogoski.
I just, Commissioner Antor knows. I agree with him on our monopoly money and we can have plenty of conversations about our national debt. However, my one edit in his comment, when he said, "We will be in the same boat", the reality is that we are in the same paper boat today. And today, our decisions have those consequences. And we rock the boat or we move to calmer waters together. My poetry will lack in comparison and I'll leave it there. So just remember that. We're all in this together, every day.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous? Yes, Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. I am remiss that in my comments in the previous vote, I did not thank you and thank this entire board for the ultimate compromise that was struck. As uncomfortable and troubling and mixed it was, we have never had a process like this before. And I think in large part was because of your leadership and the leadership of this board. I still sit uneasy with the final result, but there are so many parts of that decision that I am proud of. And I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Womack?
Yeah, I want to make a public correction. I have found out the GRTC, African-American organization, is the sole owner of the Transformational Center that we will be funding the workforce development for $1 million. So, that's just one of the things on my list that was done in that community. Definitely wish we could have did more, especially for those that came out to speak today. And I just want to thank the staff also and everybody that was a part of the ARPA, because I know it was a lot of strenuous work. And this has been a learning process and good luck to those that will continue on. And I definitely understand just the need in the community to be more inclusive as we go. But making sure we're doing that all around the board, from the county to the city to the state level and just continuing to take a look at things and addressing as many as we can. And just once again, glad to see the CDFI. That was something that I really supported. Not everything I supported got through there, but I'm happy to see some of the things that are getting started and that are transformational and historical that's been done by the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Chair. David, I, once again, we agree on the paper boat we're in. But besides, I really wanted to thank everybody that showed up. You know, I may not agree with everybody here, but I've always told people, if they want, they say, "How can we make a difference?" You know, public comment is incredibly important and most people don't participate. You come to most of our meetings, there's very little public comment. I think the city of Grand Rapids, their board probably needs to hear from more people because they, in my mind, they, in a lot of ways, they should disappoint you, the way they spent their money or didn't spend their money on some of this stuff, okay? That's where the rubber hits the road for a lot of you people because it's the city of Grand Rapids and yet they're punting a lot of their responsibilities. But your participation-
You're still talking to me, right?
I'm sorry. Just letting them know, I appreciate their comments. Public comment is incredibly important and yet we don't get that much of it. And when we have something like this come down the pike, everybody is coming for this because there's all this money out there. The transformational piece needs to be, we need to work, besides these times when we got all this grant money, to collaborate and work on some ideas. Because right now, we were drinking out of a fire hose, you know? I mean, that's what it felt like. And I think we did the best we could. And again, I just think it's really important to stay engaged. You may have lost some funding that you were looking for, but like Commissioner Ponstein said, this should be the beginning. And I plan on taking a deeper look into this Diatribe, to be honest with you. That's on me. It's just so much. And I will take a deeper look. And if a lot of people, including Matt and Sam, they said, hey, you know, it's worth a look, a better look. I didn't take a deep enough look. Just didn't. So, shame on me. But this piece, the public comment, is incredibly important. Continue to do it. And I always tell people, just make sure you stay professional, stay on task. Because we've had other public comment where, you know, it just gets totally out of control. So, again, thank you for coming.
Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair. So in my invocation, I mentioned that Thanksgiving is past and, you know, we have a country like no other. Do we have problems? We sure do. Are there things we need to work on? We sure do. But through all the hype of Thanksgiving and now we're into the holiday season, you know, wall-to-wall commercials on things to buy, things to do with your money. I just want to give some recognition. This started years ago, what they call Giving Tuesday. And there are nonprofits, not only from Kent County but across the nation, that receive millions, billions of dollars in donations from people that want to help out. They know a 501, 5013C, and they do some work. So, I always take part of it. There's normally one that always gets something. It's a little place called Cafe Reconcile. And I think to sum up what a lot was said today, I mean, this is a nonprofit that is building hope and changing lives. And I got a note from one of the recipients that will be responsible benefiting from not only my donation, but the kind person that doubled every single donation that came in that day. And he just wrote me here simply, it just said, "At a certain point in life, you feel like nobody cares about you. And it's hard because people might try to pull you down. But there will always be people in this world that open up to you and care about you and want you to be in a better life. They think you're special." And that's what we got to remember, is that we do have a strong community. Can we do more? Absolutely. But we've got to do it together. And government isn't the solution. These nonprofits that are making changes in life deliver results unlike any government could ever do. So, thank you.
All right. Commissioner LaGrand?
Thank you, Chair. There's been a fair amount of talk today about the city of Grand Rapids not spending their money in the way that the county is spending it. And I, while not an expert on this, we do need to remember that a big category of ARPA money was tax revenue replacement and that with the pandemic and people working from home, the income tax was very different for the city and they did lose more revenue than the county did, which relies on property taxes. So, those numbers are different and that there is a reason for that. And I was not part of how they spent it, but it's, we can't look at it as it's comparing apples and oranges. So I just really want people to remember that. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the mayor, I also thank you. Yes, Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you, Chair. Again, with a just quick comment on the theme of, you know, the projects that didn't get funded today through the ARPA dollars, like, to continue the efforts behind a lot of these that are good projects. Specifically, want to highlight, I like the idea DeAndre had with the esports center facility. I think that'd be a great addition to this community, so I hope he doesn't lose the energy behind that idea. And I also just express, Mr. Chair, that my hope that I get to watch his conversation with Donald Trump.
Smell a profit center here. All right, anyone else? Yes, Vice Chair Breebie?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to highlight a couple high schools in my district. Caledonia High School, over the weekend, their boys' football team was state runner-up for Division One. So, congratulations to them. And then also my alma mater, South Christian High School. Their boys had the perfect season for football, fourteen and oh, and they were Division Four champions. And they won twenty-eight to zero. It was a very lively game to attend, so congratulations and way to go. Go team.
Thank you. Rashida Jones?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to share that I've been doing in my life, a lot of reading with Brene Brown. And if none of you have heard of her, I'm going to suggest you Google it, you watch her TED Talk. Today, we spent a lot of time talking about a resource that is scarce, is funding. We had more requests than we had funding to fulfill. But what isn't scarce is compassion. And there is enough compassion for everyone. And what happens to one of us happens to all of us. And I'd like us to take time to recognize that and help bridge any gaps that are perceived in that area because I personally have taken the time to have that personal growth and know that I live my life with that in the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hennessy?
Thank you, too. Talking my memory, I have an announcement. I'm very proud of West Catholic, which won its division in the football finals this weekend, too. It's quite an achievement. It's a very small school with a lot of spirit. And I'm very proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? If not, I still have a few comments. So, again, first of all, just thank you to my commissioners for all of the work that you have taken on. I'm not sure any of us anticipated this much of work would be required when we started down this process, but it's been monumental. It is, it can be found in the Bible that it says, "The root of all money, love of money is the root of all evil." So, I, at the risk of being accused of rewriting the Bible, I think I've also learned that the allocation of money is the root of all political discord. And it has pushed us, again, to that limit. But I remain proud that we have stayed at the table and we continue to talk to each other. Even though we may not agree on these things, we still have tasks ahead of us. So, thank you for that. To those organizations that did receive awards out of this process, congratulations. And we look forward to continue to work with you in truly making this produce changes in our community. in truly making this produce changes in our community. So, thank you, and we look forward to that. Again, to the organizations that did not, the visions you brought to this table, I would presume you will not lose. Those visions were worthwhile with or without this ARPA funding. And I truly believe that most of them will survive and will find other opportunities to partner and encourage each other and to take your initiatives, take your thoughts, take your ideas forward. I empathize with the diatribes' concerns and observations about this disappointment. All of us have had, you know, if it's anything like mine, you've had hundreds of inquiries, letters, calls, texts, emails from hundreds of different organizations across this community urging us to take their project seriously, more seriously, and above all means, fund it. My favorite project didn't make the list. As many of you know, I would have put the Mary Freebed Rehabilitation Hospital at the top of the list as the most transformational project here. It didn't make it. It's not getting a dime. I got that, and I'm going to have to go back and have conversations with those people about that. And there are probably dozens and dozens of others who also will be wanting to know, "Why didn't they get funded?" And I'm going to say the same thing, which is, again, your vision is big enough, and it will survive this. And I encourage you to continue to partner with us. This federal money is not the beginning of what we do at the county, and it certainly is not going to be the end of what we do at the county. So, we're still here to do an awful lot of work, so I encourage you to stay tuned. And now, more pedantically, there's this reception that was scheduled after this for our retiring commissioners. Conclusion is, that's probably not a good time to do that. We'll do that at the next meeting, after our next meeting. And again, I apologize. Frequently, we cancel that last meeting of the year. We're not going to do that this year. We do have a lot of things on the agenda for this coming last meeting of the year. So, I'm sorry, but we're going to have to come back on the 15th to address that. So, with that good news, I will call on Commissioner Ponstein for one last motion. Did you bring the cake? Well, we'll use it for a different purpose, but yes. Support? Supported. All right. We are adjourned.